Now open the City Commission meeting here on Thursday, June 20th, six o'clock in Commission chambers. Ms. Paul, do you want to do anything or you don't want me to? I'll do it.
I think we're ready to do it.
So, we're going to have the invocation and the pledge. The invocation tonight is Reverend Ginger Isom from West Lee United Methodist Church. If you'll stand for that, remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Oh God, who has gifted women and men with your vision and the skills necessary to lead a community into the reality of that vision, we invite you into this space as an active participant in the business before the City Council this evening. Pour out your spirit upon these elected leaders entrusted with the well-being and growth of this city. Give each of them a servant's heart that mirrors the heart of Christ, who embodies unconditional love for all people regardless of race, gender, culture, creed, age, or means. Let them have the same mind as Christ, doing nothing out of selfish ambition or empty conceit, but in humility may they regard others as better than themselves, looking not to their own interest but to the interest of others. In so doing, we pray that the decisions thus made here tonight will be to the benefit of all businesses and residents proud to call Johnson City home. Above all, may you be glorified in those decisions and the progress that results from them in the days ahead. We take this time to also lift the family and friends and our neighboring Washington County Commissioners and residents in prayer as they mourn the loss of Commissioner Susie Williams. Comfort them in their grief, and as they tell stories of her life and love and legacy, may their memories bring more smiles than tears, more joy than pain. In the name of the one who has called us to live a life of love for one another, Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, excuse me, Mayor. The first order of business is to consider item number 3.1, which is approval of the minutes from the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting held on Thursday, June 6, 2024.
Move approval. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next order of business is item 3.2, to consider approval of the minutes from the special call City Commission meeting held on Thursday, June 13, 2024.
Some moves.
Sir?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Abstain. I was not here.
Next, next order of business is presentations, and under item 4.1, we have a presentation of proclamation recognizing the month of July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Johnson City. We have our Director April Norris here, as well as Assistant Director Sam Miller.
Whereas Parks and Rec is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Johnson City, and whereas Parks and Rec promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas Parks and Rec promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and whereas Parks and Rec encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas Parks and Rec is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, and whereas Parks and Rec programming and educational activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas Parks and Rec increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas Parks and Rec is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas Parks and Rec is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Johnson City recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, Mayor of the city of Johnson City, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month in Johnson City, Tennessee.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to our Commissioners and our city management team for supporting what we do throughout Parks and Recreation and seeing its importance throughout our community. Parks and Recreation Month is nationally recognized by NRPA, which is our National Recreation and Parks Association, and this year its theme is "Where We Belong." And I thoroughly believe that what we have created here in Johnson City for our community gives them that sense of that's where I belong. We have a phenomenal team that work really hard at everything that we do throughout the community to make sure that our parks and our programs and our community centers, our senior centers are up to par and that we're providing the services that we need, and we have the staff that works really hard to do so, and your support means everything to us. So, I'm going to let Sam say a little bit about what we have going on.
Well, you put that so eloquently. I'm not sure I can add too much. I would like to just reiterate that we are honored and so grateful to have the opportunity to serve our community in this way, and for the month of July, we will be celebrating with a scavenger hunt where people will be able to travel and experience all of our parks and amenities and have the chance to actually win an I Heart J.C. Parks shirt. So, hoping people will enjoy that.
If you have a J.L. for J.C. Parks.
And, you know, it really, it's a way for us to continue our mission of connecting our community, not only connecting one another, but connecting individuals to our natural resources, like you mentioned, and thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. I just have to say, I would put our Parks and Rec department and our fields and our places, our activity areas, against anybody in the country, and they do a great job, and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I think you need it again. So, we have a presentation, a presentation, the 27th Annual Pepsi Independence Day Celebration and Fireworks. We have Rex Henley coming up for that.
Thank you, Mr. Henley. Appreciate you being here. We really appreciate what Pepsi does with the fireworks on July 4th. I think, again, I would put our fireworks up against anybody in the country and where we do it, and with all the people that can gather there at Freedom Hall. We really like that, so. But you talk about what's coming up.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So, again, I heard you speak earlier about the Parks and Recs and the facilities around here, and just the city in general. Like, it is truly a pleasure to do business. My company, you know, in this city, like, you guys are great. All the facilities we work with and all that are, like Mayor said, top-notch. The people are great to work with, and it is, again, a privilege to do business in this city. And, you know, we do have the 37th annual, well, it's 37th year of the Johnson City Pepsi fireworks over at Freedom Hall. You know, we had to take a couple of years off because of COVID, but this is, it's hard to believe, 37 years of this event. So, again, thank you so much, and I do want to, I do have some VIP passes and some wristbands.
I always like those.
Yes, and it's always a pleasure, and I want to say thank you for starting the fireworks show for the city.
It's been my honor.
Yeah, glad you're there. So, real quick, the events start at 4:00 p.m. on the 4th of July over at the Parks and Rec, or Freedom Hall. It's, you know, the kids' activities, the food trucks and all that. And then the music acts start at 6:00. There's three music acts that will be on, and then the grand prize drawing for the Great American Giveaway that we partner with Food City, where folks can win $10,000 worth of groceries, $5,000 worth of gas, or $1,000 worth of Christmas products. That's at 9:40. And Mr. Mayor here will start the fireworks show at 10:00. And like he said, and he wanted to been out for this event in his, in his class, fireworks shows, you know, in this area, so our friends at fireworks shows will be shooting that off the phone. So, just like to say, you know, please throw some chairs in the back of the truck, come on up, and there's going to be an awesome event, and there's all kinds of things supposed to be, kids, you know, kids events there as well. So, I said, thank you for what must happen for 37 years, and please make sure it comes out.
And Mayor, as you're making your way up, the next item is the public comment on the agenda. We have three speakers signed up to speak under public comment. The first, our first speaker is Steve Hunt, and Steve is going to speak on the Princeton Road rezoning, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
If you'll state your name and your address, you have three minutes to talk.
Steve, Mike, 2217 Kipping Street, 3rd and 4th pound of bin here. My comments tonight are focused at the three yes voters from last time. I've been puzzled why these Commissioners didn't seem to demonstrate the same level of concern on the issues of parking, safety, sidewalk, and flooding as did Commissioners Fowler and Murphy, especially after their seemingly sensible comments during the first reading, i.e., taking the lane that makes the most sense and does the least harm, as well as there is some value in knowing what you have. With this said, I have several questions and observations. One, without the developers being requested to appear to resolve any key questions or issues, this gives the appearance that the Commissioners are doing all of the heavy lifting on getting this zoning request approved. I kind of wonder why. Two, last meeting, Mr. Dutton, aka a planning commission member and a proponent of yes to rezoning, appeared at the end of the comments section and was permitted to speak without correctly identifying himself. Why was he permitted to do this? To me, this would seem inappropriate and unethical and contain any decision making by the Commissioners tonight, especially since there was no time left for counteropinions. Three, Mr. Dutton subsequently made comments contradicting some of the comments he had already made at the prior planning commission meeting about traffic flow and his travel habits in and around the Nave, Kipping, and Brown areas. Please review the two videos for details about this. Number four, Mr. Dutton apparently lives outside the Nave, Kipping, and attached neighborhood and appears to have lived there only a couple of years, nowhere near the long-term residency of some neighborhood residents along Kipping and Nave. This is relevant since he stated he avoided the neighborhood speed bump streets going to work and, I believe, returning home. How then would he know the current traffic flow around the neighborhood throughout the day and night? Five, at the planning commission meeting, Mr. Dutton also stated that the engineer, Mr. Wood, had done a fantastic job in responding to the neighbors' questions and concerns, practically resolving some of the issues. The concerned neighborhood was never given a chance to respond or to question the validity or accuracy of his statements. I thought to myself, what about the subsequent four or five planned revisions? Was still nothing achieved to resolve the potential parking and safety concerns? Six, once again tonight, I don't believe the developers are here to answer any particular questions. Seven, concerning the new no parking this block signs on Nave, the installation of these seems a knee-jerk reaction. My question here, will all violators be issued tickets by the police and/or towed off to parts unknown? Who reports the violations? Eight, finally, why do we, or why do you continue to oppose the wishes of the directly affected residents, especially on Nave, and the 150-plus neighborhood residents who signed a petition stating that they were opposed to the development, many of which possibly voted for you in the past elections? That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Margaret Davis.
Again, please state your name and address.
Margaret Davis, 2216 Kipping Street, Johnson City. I'm probably going to be short. Today is my anniversary, and normally my husband and I would be out spending money in Johnson City, but this is so important to me that I had to come, and despite the feeling that it's already a done deal, I still had to make sure that I came. Neighborhoods have personalities, and in 2015, and I, when I moved to that person, that neighborhood, it was because of the personality of that neighborhood. I believe that this project and rezoning will change the entire personality of that neighborhood, and for the first time, I told my husband after the last meeting, this probably won't be my forever home, as I thought it would. I'm not asking you this time, I'm begging you, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michael Miles.
Michael Miles, 2220 Lakeland Drive. I ask you to vote no on the rezoning request for Princeton Road and Nave Drive on the agenda tonight. I spoke about the past, present, and future had been presented by all parties, now comes the time for the end. A lot of my neighbors who are not here tonight due to proactive measures, the city to install no parking signs along the entire length of Nave Drive after the second meeting. Just made them feel the decision, rezone had already been made. Statements made by the city said there would be minimal effects on the neighborhood from the rezone. When you take away parking from homes that were purchased with the understanding they had street parking, you just devalued their property, and now some Nave Drive residents must park in the front yards. No survey was conducted for the no parking signs to be installed, as was done for the speed pumps. I was told by the city that they would put up no parking signs in front of the rezoned property after the property was rezoned for safety concerns. Being too close to Princeton Road knocked the whole block with the signs. At the last meeting, developers represented made the statement they would purchase the property and put what they could on it, if not rezone. I say that's great. If the developer wants, he can reapply for rezoning. My biggest concern has been about safety. When the developer revised the concept plan from 37 units to 24 units, the result was that the single entrance of the concept plan was located at the top of the property, which is the furthest distance from Princeton Road to their property. This has been the safest proposal. At the planning commission meeting, the entrance to the concept plan was moved down the hill 150 feet of the, to the corner, from the corner of Princeton Road to Nave Drive to satisfy one homeowner in the neighborhood, and I don't blame them for requesting it either. The planning commission praised the engineer for changing the entrance from one household so lights would not shine on their house, taking no consideration for safety. There, again, it was just a last-minute deal for us. City engineers stated that they would not allow any more entrances on Princeton Road. The last meeting stated there could be exceptions. Also, they stated the state had, has not said they would not allow crossing the creek. The cost is why the developer would not do it. Three members of the neighborhood have contacted the state and were told that with safety concerns, they would consider it. There is not an existing curb cut on Nave Drive for the proposed project, so there's not an existing entrance that they can say that's there. All Commissioners have mentioned parking problems, indicating that this has been a concern at every meeting. I think recommendations by the commissions, rezone to R3, makes most sense for everyone involved. That gives the commission control of the land use. Thank you all. I do appreciate everybody's extra time they had to put in for the families, though.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next order of business is to consider appointment, approval of appointments to volunteer boards.
Would you like to? Sure. So, the Commission spent several hours in a workshop this afternoon reviewing multiple applications from people to serve on an assortment of boards and commissions. Johnson City is very fortunate to, every time we do this, we have more applicants than we have spots open to appoint, which is a great challenge to have as a community. If you have applied and you, your name isn't read, there, we would encourage you to continue to apply, because sometimes we have someone already serving who might be looking for a second term. We do try to create rotation on boards and commissions after two terms, but I would ask you to reapply if you don't hear your name read today. So, I'll start in, in the order that they appeared alphabetically on our list. The first is an appointment to the Bright Ridge Board of Directors, and we would be reappointing James Hasselsteiner. We have two appointments to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we would be appointing Stephanie Dickerson and Steve Lewis. We have one appointment to the Health and Educational Facilities Board, and that appointment would be Catherine Wilhite. And then we have six appointments to the Housing and Community Development Advisory Board, and those appointments or reappointments would be Travis Hathaway, Deborah Harley-McLasky, Douglas Dotterweish, Stephen Osborne, Barbara Raymond, and Ash Hughes. We have three appointments, I'm sorry, we have, we had three openings, but we're actually going to make four appointments to the Johnson City Development Authority, and those appointments are Brent Nipper, Ramona Har, Daniel Blackburn, and Robert Williams. We have two appointments to the Johnson City Public Library Board, Ashley Newton and Scott Jeffress. We have five appointments to the Johnson City Regional Planning Commission. Those include Sean Ochenbein, Tembra Aldridge, Laura Kelly, Stephen Goodson, and we have a deferred appointment. One of the appointments has to be within the city's planning district, but outside of our incorporated limits, and we're going to defer appointment on that spot until a future meeting. The next is a single appointment to the Johnson City Senior Services Advisory Council, and that would be Kathy Rosario. Three appointments to the Parks and recreational, Recreation Advisory Board, Stacy Wild, Natalie Smith, and Megan Williams. Three appointments to the Public Art Committee, Sage Parrott, Taylor Campbell, Felicia Faniola Gregory. We're going to defer an appointment at the present to the Tri-Cities Regional Airport Authority, and we have one appointment to the EMS Board, and that would be Assistant City Manager Steve Willis. And so that represents the sum total of appointments worked out in the workshop, and I would present those by way of a motion. I'll second. So, there we are. Do you want to finish? Make a motion for appointment. And we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Sure. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner, your next order of business is to consider the consent agenda.
I will start with my right tonight. Commissioner Wise? I did not have anything I wanted to pull. All right. Vice Mayor?
No, sir.
No? And I have not. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I will, I'm sorry, I will be abstaining. I have a conflict of interest with 7.1.1.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Abstain.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner, the next order of business is under item eight, and these are second reading of ordinances. The first one is item 8.1. This is ordinance 4884-24. This is the second reading and public hearing, and it's an ordinance conveying a certain parcel of property owned by the city of Johnson City to Bluff City Volunteer Fire Department at parcel 112-053.20 in Sullivan County. And we have Director Witherspoon here to present on this item or answer any questions that you might have.
As we discussed last time, a small tract that came over when we acquired Chincavine Grove Utility District, it's where their old office building was at, it's about a .4 or 5 acre tract. We had it appraised by Dun &amp; Metz. Praise value is $47,000. It's closer to the city limits of Bristol than it is to the city limits of Johnson City. We would recommend moving forward. It's a beneficial use for that community up there.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Lous?
Public hearing.
Oh, it is public hearing. I'm sorry, I was just so excited to sell that property. So, I will open the public hearing. If anyone wants to, anyone wants to speak for it or against it, you can come forward and state your name and your address. You'll have three minutes to speak. So, I will open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Would you like to make your motion? I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next item is item 8.2. This is ordinance 4887-24. This is the second reading and public hearing. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Johnson City by changing from I-1 Industrial District to B-4 for property located at Zero Wayfield Drive. We have Planner Riley Putney here.
Yes. Riley Putney, nice to be here in front of you guys tonight again. Just no changes to the rezoning request from I-1 to B-4. Will be happy to answer any questions and present if the Commission wants me to.
We have a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Here it is.
I'm sorry.
All right. Again, I will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, come forward, give your name and address. You have three minutes. Open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
I will.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have two seconds, Ms. Lous. Which of you would you like? Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioners, item 8.3 is ordinance number 4889-24. This is also the second reading and public hearing for an ordinance providing for the conveyance of a certain parcel of real estate, of real property located at Lakeview Drive in the town of Unicoy, Tennessee, and owned by the city of Johnson City, Tennessee, to Roger and Sharon Gardner. And we have our Assistant City Manager Willis here to present and answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this ordinance would allow the conveyance of a small parcel of the Buffalo Valley property, approximately one-half acre, for $15,000 to Roger and Sharon Gardner. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions. And I will, again, open the public hearing. Want to come forward, please, Steve? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioners, now we have item nine, which is the third reading of ordinances. Item 9.1 is ordinance 4864-23. This is an ordinance to authorize the quitclaim deed to 724 LLC for permanent drainage easements as part of the West Walnut Street project. We have Director Miles here, as well as some folks in his office if the Commission has questions about this.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, just here to answer any questions. I have the third reading.
Has anything changed since the last time?
No, sir.
All right. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion. Or is this?
This is the public hearing. We're on third now.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Next order of business is item 9.2. This is ordinance 4881-24. And again, this is the third reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, by changing from I-1 District, R-2 District, R-5 District, to R-4 District for the property located at Zero Princeton Road. We have Planner Bryce McNamara here.
Evening, Commissioner. As Ms. Ball said, I'm Bryce McNamara, Planner with Development Services. The proposal and staff's recommendation has remained the same, but I can answer any questions you may have.
Anything changed since the last?
No changes.
Have a motion? Discussion?
I'll move approval.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have just a few words to say. Let me get close to my microphone. They've given me a temporary microphone. I thought maybe they didn't want me to talk tonight. So, folks, I've voted yes twice on this rezoning request. Last, our last meeting requested that perhaps some work could be done to look at some compromise for an R3. And I hear some of the citizens get up and, and talk about that would be an acceptable development. There is no doubt that the residents of this neighborhood don't want this development. All the issues of traffic and parking and flooding and home values have been presented to us. We hear them all the time when we are faced with rezonings that are not favorable. Generally speaking, as I mentioned the last time, that much of it never materializes, that people kind of fit into the neighborhood and they become a part of the neighborhood. But tonight, I have thought about how to balance the opportunity for development with the grave concerns that the neighbors have about this development. And I could vote for an R3, but tonight, as it exists, I'm going to be voting no.
I guess I'm going to continue to vote yes for this. The impact of 18, I think, units versus 24 is insignificant as far as safety, driving, traffic. And I don't know that putting the, the landowner or proposed landowner through another process of starting from scratch will, will change the opinion or the outcome of those that are around the landowner. The developer has been extremely compromising and accommodating to request concerns, interest of those that surround, which we don't always see. I've got questions surrounding the parking. Commissioner, or Vice Mayor, Murphy had mentioned he had concerns about parking at the last meeting, but after we'd already voted. Would love to understand more about that, because as a reminder, we have ordinances that state required parking. The developer has gone above and beyond. How much parking should we require? What are we going to do in the future with other developments when we say over and above requirement is just not enough? How are we going to make that determination? This zoning request is, is only unique in that there are three different zonings on this piece of property. This zoning request is no different than many others that we've had that, you know, we had upset, concerned residents. Sometimes we have to make tough decisions. Sometimes we upset our friends and our family. Sometimes we upset ourselves. We had a tax increase last year. I don't like that. And sometimes we make decisions that, as has been referenced, could lose a vote. Well, I'm just a volunteer. I was elected. If I lose a race, that's okay. But in good conscience, I can't vote against this development, because I don't see anything that says there's a concern that's different than others.
Seeing no one else. Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
No.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
No.
Mayor Fowler?
No.
The motion fails. I believe that you have to redo the motion. Is that correct?
I don't know.
We're good? Thank you. The next item of business is item 9.3. This is an ordinance, ordinance 4886-24. It's an ordinance to suspend Title VIII, Chapter 1, Section 102 of the Code of the City of Johnson City. And our Assistant City Manager Willis is here on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. This suspension would allow for the sale and consumption of alcohol during the Meet the Mountains Festival in August at the Wing Deer Park lakefront. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any changes since the first two readings?
No, sir.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
The next item is item 9.4. This is ordinance 4888-24. This is an ordinance to establish the property tax rate, appropriate funds, and adopt a budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. And Dustin, thank you for being here, and thank you for your hard work on this budget.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. There have been no changes throughout this process. Be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we recommend approval on third and final reading.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Ball?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Further comments from Commissioners? I'll start over here. Commissioner Wise?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor.
No, sir.
None.
Just real quick, I know Reverend mentioned at the prayer about Commissioner Susie Williams, but from a few of us, several of us up here that knew her very well, she was a light in Johnson City and made a meaningful lasting impact on this city and to people individually. You know, there's probably two women that have made a big impact in my life, at least professionally and in service, and one of them I'm sitting next to, and, and Susie Williams. And she'll be deeply missed.
I'd like to echo that as well. I'm sorry. She, you know, on, on the last day of her life, she was still serving. And she probably has done more for this community in terms of public service and giving back to this community and to the citizens here. I know she served many, many years on the foundation at Mountain State's Health Alliance, helped raise so much money for the Children's Hospital. She was on the Public Library Board, served as a county commissioner for how many terms? At least two terms and more. And, you know, I, I guess for all of us, if, if the last day of our life is in public service, then we have done good, you know? So, we're going to miss Susie just tremendously. She was a little lady. She was, I don't know what, four foot nine.
Ninety pounds, dripping wet.
But she just always had a cheery attitude and a willingness to help, and we're going to miss her. And we want to send our condolences to her family, to her son, Robert, and her, her husband, Jack. And they're just pillars of this community, and we're going to miss her.
Well, I was going to end with that, too, but we need to pray for their family, especially for Jack. They've been married 64 years. He's been with her that whole time, and now he has nobody else at home with him. And I know he's a tough guy, but, you know, it's going to be hard. So, please, if everyone would pray for their family. I think services are Monday, so we'll, we'll be thinking about them for a while.
Mayor, if I will, I can't let this moment pass without commenting on this matter. Susie will be greatly missed. She's truly a woman of character and integrity. And so, people like us of another generation, we have to remember those who helped pave and prepare the way, because we, we stand on the shoulders of our heroes. And she truly is a community hero that will be greatly missed.
Thank you. If nothing else, I will close the meeting.